Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our meeting, regular meeting of council for Tuesday, October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty five. I'd ask everyone to please stand for the National Anthem. So, thank you. Welcome to members of council, staff, and the public. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof? Seeing none, Deputy Mayor Williams for the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Manley.
Mm-hmm.
That the Council of the Township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda of the regular meeting of council on Tuesday, October the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty five.
Any discussions, additions to the agenda? I will just say, just hindsight here, that you're here, that we will be discussing the strong mayor power for the mayor at the next committee of the whole. We're going to have a full discussion because we want to get some more information from there. We got some more letters from other municipalities, so we just want to reach out to them and come up with something. But we're still moving forward with that. So, no additions to the agenda. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. None opposed. Moving on to adoption of the previous minutes.
I've got it.
Okay. Counselor Madden.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Kadel. The minutes of the following meetings be adopted as circulated, regular meeting council minutes, Monday, September twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty five.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? Any errors or omissions? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. None opposed. Moving on to, we have no delegation, staff reports, administrative department, award two thousand and twenty six municipal elections, RFP. Jeff, Counselor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Madden, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives Staff Report AD two thousand and twenty five dash ten, award two thousand and twenty six municipal election, RFP, and that Council of the Township of North Glengarry accepts and awards the request for proposal for election services to votes, and that Council authorizes the clerk to make any minor amendments to the agreement as may be necessary to give effect to this decision, and that Council authorizes the mayor and CAO to enter an agreement with votes for the upcoming two thousand and twenty six municipal election for an overall estimated cost of thirty thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents to be broken up into four billing cycles.
Okay. Thank you. Jenna.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the next municipal election will take place on October twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty six, and in preparation, the Clerk's Department has begun planning to meet some set deadlines for a number of election-related activities. So, in keeping with previous elections, the Clerk's Department and slash the returning officers have formed an election working group with the nearby lower municipalities of SDG along with the city of Cornwall. So, on July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty five, a joint RFP was released in collaboration with SDG and the city of Cornwall for internet, telephone, and paper ballot voting along with tabulator services. There were three proposals that were received: Intellavote, New Vote, and Votes. They were all evaluated on capabilities, approach, expertise, qualification, and cost, with Votes having the highest score at ninety-eight over a hundred. They offered the strongest technical solutions, competitive pricing, positive municipal references. We did reach out to some of the ones that they did list, and we did hear a feedback from them, and they were all pretty happy with them because they are kind of new, but they were used in the two thousand and twenty two election, and those municipalities already assigned on with them.
Were those municipalities in Ontario?
Yes. Okay, inclusion of tabulators. Overall, the contract cost is anticipated to be a thirty thousand, four hundred and eight dollars and sixty-four cents, which will be payable in four installments during the two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty six year with the cost included in the two thousand and twenty six election. So, there will be some costs that we'll say two thousand and twenty five, but it will be reflected on the two thousand and twenty six budget. So, it's all been, it's budgeted for, and I did speak.
Because we've been budgeting that for every year.
Yeah, exactly. And so, tonight, the Clerk's Department is requesting Council to, the approval, to award the request for approval to her votes for the municipal election services of two thousand and twenty six.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Go ahead, Counselor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jenna, do we know, I noticed in there that they said that they had English as the language that it's done in, but you could add another language.
Yes.
I know last time we had some problems with the French side things or whatever, and that it wasn't, it was difficult, it was difficult to understand the, especially on the, I think on the telephone voting, it was difficult to understand the names and all that kind of thing. The pronunciation was not, was not done very well. Have we looked into that or whatever to make sure that we have that covered?
Yes. Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, we did, and that was a conversation. We, as I mentioned in the resolution, there is still some changes that are going to be added. So, in the contract, it does say English and French.
Okay.
As well as the other ones. But we did look into that. I have to go back and see if the other municipalities did have French, but we did have a discussion around there. And I, they do have some bilingual people on staff, so that should be able to help with the printing of the voter cards.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a thought on that. When we, when you amended the contract, can we add something that says, you know, three days before the election, we can, or the department can hear the message on the phone to approve it?
Yes.
So that we know that the pronunciation is correct, and that way it's not a day-of thing or a last-minute thing, and it saves everybody a little bit of hassle, maybe?
Yes. Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I can definitely look at adding that in. There are still little tweaks to be made. So, I can add that, and I, sorry, I can add that and ask that with the committee that we have, we have been discussing with.
And don't get the, the girl from Google Maps to do it as I just drove through, as I just drove through Quebec, and she butchered every place we were going through. So, yeah, go ahead. No, for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just out of curiosity, Jenna, the, the purple highlighted, is that our committee or is that the company that acknowledges that that needed to be addressed?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, that was me.
Okay.
So, what happened was, they wrote back, and the clerk, interim clerk for the city of Cornwall, did have the procurement, their procurement department and her kind of review it. And it was, again, little, I wouldn't say little, but, but it was administrative changes.
Yeah.
So, that purple that you see was my little notation that will be added at the end.
Okay, perfect.
If, you know, if approved.
I, I don't think I saw anything besides what you had caught. I, it was long.
And are other municipalities doing paper voting?
Sorry?
Are we the only municipality doing paper voting?
No, no, actually, we're not. We're, I believe, South Dundas is as well.
Oh, yeah? Just two of us, eh? Go ahead, Counselor Manley.
One more thing, too, Jenna. I noticed that we had the Intellavote, at the end of our package there, we had the Intellavote summary of, of the last election.
Mm-hmm.
And wondering, will we get that same sort of summary with, with this company?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I can definitely look into that. I would assume.
Yeah.
Because that is very helpful, and it's very helpful going forward to, for future elections.
Right.
So, we can see if paper voting is still.
Right, exactly.
Something that we need.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can look into that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Not seeing any. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. None opposed. Okay, moving on to Alternative Voting Methods, two thousand and twenty six. Counselor Kadel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Manley, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives Staff Report number AD two thousand and twenty five dash eleven, Alternate Voting Methods dash two thousand and twenty six Municipal Election, and that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry adopts Bylaw number thirty-two dash two thousand and twenty five, being a bylaw to authorize voting by internet, telephone, and the use of optical scanning equipment, paper ballots for the two thousand and twenty six municipal election, and that Bylaw number thirty-two, two thousand and twenty five be read a first, a second, and third time, and enacted in open council this fourteenth day of October, two thousand and twenty five.
Okay, thank you. Jenna.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, as mentioned in my previous report, the two thousand and twenty six election is scheduled to be held on October twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-six, and in accordance with the Municipal Elections Act, the municipal clerk has the statutory authority to plan and conduct the election, including the discretion to establish alternative voting procedures and to utilize appropriate vote counting equipment as permitted by the municipal bylaw. In the two thousand and twenty-two municipal elections, twenty, twenty-seven point nine percent of eligible electors participated. The lower number was due to the fact that there was three seats that were already acclaimed. So, that, that equals out to the lower number. Of these six, of these, sixty-three percent voted online, fourteen point six voted by telephone, and twenty-one point eight percent voted by paper ballot, with the highest participant, sorry, participation among electors aged fifty to eighty. This range also accounted for the majority of paper votes. For the upcoming election, the Clerk's Department recommends implementing, implementing the extended electronic voting period to provide electors with greater flexibility. Voting to be conducted via internet, telephone, or paper ballot, with electronic ballots requiring confirmation of selections prior to submission to ensure accuracy. So, what that means is when you do it online, that they, they confirm that you, they confirm your vote before it gets submitted again. Accordingly, it is recommended that Council authorize a municipal clerk to proceed with the two thousand and twenty-six municipal elections using an integrated voting system that supports internet, telephone, and paper ballot vote options, in according with the previous, sorry, provisions of the Municipal Act, Elections Act, to ensure accessibility, security, and maximum voter participation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just looking at those stats again, and the fact that we are offering paper ballots, I think it was twenty-one or twenty-two percent of people used the paper ballots, and most of them were above the age of eighty. So, I think it's good that we offer that, as the seniors tend to be the ones who vote the most, and so just giving them a lot more options is great. So, somebody, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to follow on that, I think you're right. It's also individual for them to go and vote, right?
Yeah.
It's not something that's going to be adopted at this point. Just out of curiosity, Jenna, in the, in the documentation, you mentioned an app. Are we looking at using that, or are we just sticking with, are we staying away from that? And you don't have to answer that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'll have to double-check. I know there was votes, I believe, did offer the app. Is that what you were referring to?
Yeah, in there, in reading what they had submitted.
Yeah.
It mentioned in there. There wasn't any detail.
Okay.
And I, I'm not pushing it by any stretch. I was just curious, and I, I'm going to say that's something that may US issues day out because that's going to happen.
Yes, yes, agreed, agreed.
I was just curious.
Yeah, I don't think we are, but I can double-check for that and see.
Okay.
Yeah, and confirm with that.
I'm just curious if there are actually.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's stick with the three that we have.
Yeah, move on, and just, I could potentially go into the internet part of it, right?
Yeah.
I was kind of curious. Not that I would necessarily trust an app for, okay, but that's, yeah. Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jenna, just wondering, so with the, we have the three different types of voting, will those three types be available for the pre-voting, like for the?
Advance.
Advance polls?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I believe what we did previously is, we did have it online, I think, open for a week, and we'll probably have it maybe the day before and the day of, that we can have it open. We can, I can look and see what we did in previous years, but I know that that's, was the effect. And the conversation for the online voting, it will be open prior as well.
Okay. I just hope, I think we had a little bit of concern from people last time, too, that, I think, I can't remember off the top of my head, but I thought. I think it was, I think it was only in Alexandria.
That's what I was thinking.
And we had discussed, you know, that they would go to each of the seniors' homes to do paper ballots, and to, we had also discussed doing, you know, a half-day in, say, in Dunvegan, half-day in Maxville, you know, kind of moving it around for a couple days in advance, just putting, you know, two people on, knowing that it's not going to be that busy, but at least getting it out there so the most, we can maximize the most people that we can to vote. I think that's what we all want, and so that, I think there should be some further discussion on that with council as we move forward. Okay. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yep, I think that makes a lot of sense. You know, just anything to make voting more accessible is hopefully going to increase the voting turnout. I just mentioned in, I don't know, one of these documents about the fact that somebody could, could partially vote online and then could go and.
Yes.
Finish their vote.
Yes.
By telephone, and then if they didn't finish it by telephone, then they could go and do the rest of it by ballot.
Fact, yeah.
And, and, and I thought, well, okay, that sounds awkward for, I mean, great that they had that option, but how, how does the system track?
How is it tracking? So, through you, Mr. Mayor, like I had mentioned before, I believe there is, will be a confirmation on the online, and then generally what happens is through the system that we have on our end, once a person votes, it shows up, so we can tell if they voted or not. So, if they come in, say, hey, I, I'm here to vote, we can look up their name, and if it was completed online, we can, they'll, they'll say that it's already voted. So, if it, obviously, they didn't, then we can go on and continue on that way.
Yeah, go ahead, subsequent.
Right, except it, it sort of indicates in the, in the documentation that, that if they, if they don't finish the voting, they can do it elsewhere in a different format. And so, I just wonder how they could keep track of that.
Well, they can keep track, because if you don't hit Enter, and it says you voted or whatever it does, then you could go, because it'll automatically show up that you voted. So, if you come to vote in paper and you did see that, and you're trying to vote for the second time, you can't. But if your name, but if you didn't go the full way, because a lot of times that, this happens with the phone. They get confused, and, 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 and then they, they hang it up, and they, they don't know if they voted or not, and then they could come still, and they, we can check pretty easily. They could call town office.
Oh, okay.
They could look it up and say, no, you're correct. You did not finish your voting, so you can.
And they would start from scratch then?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's correct.
All right, thanks.
Go ahead. Yeah, just one, one more thing. So, for the day of voting.
Yes.
Will there be different polling stations?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes. That might be a little further conversation, solely because it depends on how many, like, seats are open.
Right.
Like, if there's, you know, a number of seats acclaimed, such as two thousand and twenty-two, there was only three polling stations open because the three major seats were claimed.
Right.
So, if they're all open, then we can have, you know, a number of polling stations to, to, you know, we can have one here, we can have one in, I think we did in Del Keith and Maxville. So, we can do it to accommodate, you know, the residents and the voters, the elections.
That's great. Thank you.
And we'll know that by August twenty-fourth or whatever it is.
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Jenna, just to clarify, because the, the contract is for two tabulators, so the tabulators don't have to be at the polling stations?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, for the tabulators will be at the polling stations. Sorry, was that your question?
Yeah, but if we're doing multiple polls, I'm just, that's all I'm wondering. Because the contract is for two, right?
Yeah, you can't. Like, we can't have six polls open or five polls open.
Yeah. So, I think for, for this report, what I'm doing is, yeah, just basically the alternative voting. So, yes, there will be polls open. What I have done is, for the previous report, I have asked for an estimate around four to five because I wasn't sure. So, yeah, but there will be polls, and we can, you know, we'll have, probably like we did in the previous years, have, has set up for help for people voting online. So, but yes, there will be.
So, we adjust as far as tabulators for however many, sorry.
However many polls we have, we can get the tabulators and adjust the contract after the fact.
Correct.
Gotcha, got it. Thank you.
And I don't think the cost was all that big for the tabular. It wasn't crazy. So, again, if we get a full slate of people running, then let's get people out to vote, so.
And also through you, Mr. Mayor, it's also, going back to the votes, it's nice because it's all in one, it's a one-stop shop. We didn't have to rent out the tabulators through a different company.
Right.
It's all in one easy area.
Yeah. Okay.
That, that last report was interesting because some of them quoted or bid, but they didn't have tabulators, which I thought was a little bizarre, that if we've got to go somewhere else to get them, like, it just, this, this makes a lot more sense as far as votes and everything being available through them.
If I recall, was it not Intellavote that we waited for hours upon hours to get, so, okay. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. None opposed. Okay, moving on to Public Works Department, Alexandria Main Street and Mill Square Improvements Project Update, direction for new design consultant. Counsel, Counselor Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really happy to read this one. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Manley. The Council of Township of North Glengarry receives Staff Report number PW two thousand and twenty-five dash twenty, Alexandria Main Street and Mill Square Improvements Project Update, direction for new design consultant. The Council approved the updated project direction document for the Alexandria Main Street and Mill Square Improvements Project as presented, and the Council endorsed the four-area project scope with enhanced accessibility features and refined utilities burial strategy. And the Council acknowledges that the, sorry, United Counties of SDNG are the lead agency on this project as they own the Main Street right-of-way, and the new design consultant yet to be confirmed by SDNG Council. And the Council approved the township's commitment to fund fifty percent of the design cost for the project as supported by the two thousand and twenty-five budget, and the Council provides delegated authority to the mayor and CAO to enter into a cost-sharing agreement with SDNG counties for the design portion of the project. The Council note the intent for construction to commence in two thousand and twenty-seven with funding strategy dependent on external funding availability.
Okay, thank you. That is a mouthful. Go ahead, Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry about the, the mouthful of a resolution. So, the Main Street project is a major, major milestone for North Glengarry as a whole. Really, where it comes down, you know, it's the, the bread and butter of what municipalities do in terms of, you know, our job is to make this municipality the best place to live possible, and the Main Street is really a sort of project that doesn't matter where you live in North Glengarry, it's going to make your, you know, your experience of living here better because of all the knock-on effects that a project like this has. So, very worthwhile doing. I know everyone knows that. I just, it's my own, my own soapbox, I guess. So, recently, there's been a new Director of Transportation for the United Counties of SDNG, who's a, a, a great man. It's great to meet him and talk to him about this project. What spurred this report on is that there was a tender that was awarded to Jacobs in two thousand and twenty-two when I was fresh as Public Works Director here, and that, that tender was pushed out the door, you know, very well-intentioned and, you know, was very well-done, but it didn't have the right, you know, North, North Glengarry, because I was new, didn't really get to, to, you know, participate fully in that tender. And as a consequence, Jacobs, who was the, the consultant who had the, the tender, was missing a few things, and it really got to the stage where Jacobs is a great consultant, but they're very partitioned, and they hadn't really carried for what we needed as North Glengarry. And, you know, we have a great partnership with SDNG, so they were able to say, okay, let's, let's go find a consultant who can really do this the way that it needs to be done, right? And so that was already, you know, in the works before there was a change of Transportation Director there. And now with a new director on board, there's a push to really get this project going. The other thing that's been indicated to me is that we want to, now that County Road twenty-two, you know, is, is getting nearing completion, then this will be really the next focus for SDG, and we wanted to make sure that we, at North Glengarry Public Works, take advantage of that and make sure that we're very involved in the design, that we take all of the work that was done, because there was some very valuable work done during the Jacobs tenure, is incorporated into the design, and that we can bring down the, the vagueness of the project scope, get it very specific, which, as you all know, because you always listen, always listen to me in my soapbox, is that the vagueness always listen to me in my soapbox, is that the vagueness in the project scope is how that we run over on costs. So this, I prepared a project direction document as sort of the 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 person who was sort of directly involved in each of the the design elements as we went along. Other staff members had moved on, so I was the best person to summarize it. Did it in consultation with the new staff who were in charge at the at the counties. And this document will be going to, or or a version of it will be going to the county's council, I think by the end of October, maybe mid-November, and which should give, which should award a new design consultant, which should be one of the ones who bid on the original scope of work. And we wanted to, we wanted to provide this document to give them a new scope of work that, it's not really a new scope of work, the same scope of work as provided by the BTE original EA, but really refine it down so we can cut down on change orders, the consultant isn't spending his time, you know, going and talking to hydro again to talk about the feasibility of burying hydro wires, it's a road that we've already been down, you know, let's just concentrate on the stuff that we need. Have a look here, see if this works. Okay, so this is the overall Main Street project area. One of the main things that this scope of work does, yeah, is to really define the work area. So on the original EA, we had some work going along on Bishop Street, we had some some work going along sort of outside of these boxes here and which just would really spread our consultants thin. So we've defined it down to these four key project areas, which are the Main Street proper, County Road 10, the Mill Square improvements, and then we've got these, what I called them was just adjacent areas. So these adjacent areas are essentially the the locations that was identified by the consultant and through the first PIC to make sure that we can ensure that there is enough parking access and that there's enough accessibility access. So I'll go through these project areas. So there's Main Street, one of the key changes we made here that was vague in the other project document was it didn't include the two intersections on either side. Very key that we include those two intersections on the on the project scope, because if we if we butt up to them, but we don't have that transition coming in, already being sorted out, then we're going to be well behind. County Road 10 project area, so this is as you go around the corner, this is up to the intersection because the intersection would be counted as part of of Main Street. So this project scope goes right to the the driveway of the address on the end there, it's a a commercial area, and that's also the the distance that we provide water servicing and sewer servicing. This is the Mill Square project area. So that is actually a a section that was quite well-flashed out in the original scope of work and in the EA. So the intent in Mill Square was to provide a semi-pedestrianized, a road cross-section, still have parking, still have areas where the the businesses can load and unload. There is a park to be built there and a connection at the back there as well. So all comments that we got from the the PIC and the original EA. The largest change that we've got from the original scope of work to this just project work refinement was including these three properties. So these were noted in the EA and there was a a direction from the EA to make sure that everyone had parking, to make sure everybody could get to the businesses along Main Street with a wheelchair, with, you know, anybody who needed any level access, we need to figure out how to be able to get them to these businesses. Because we have a lot of businesses, especially in this section of Main Street, that are healthcare providers and and those types of businesses, there's, businesses have come up with their own, you know, wheelchair ramp type situations some in some areas. And so that was really something that we wanted to address. Things that didn't change from the EA was making sure that we kept to larger sidewalks, that we kept to the lane widths, and to make sure that we're maximizing parking along Main Street. One of the differences that we saw on, in this scope of work, or actually, sorry, it's not in the project direction document, but we took, one of the specific references for the EA was to move the parking for a section of Main Street to one side of the street. One of the things that this project direction document does is to, instead of specifying that, to specify to maximize parking on Main Street, the, one of the reasons that is, is because of the intersection at the County Road 43. So if you come around the corner on County Road 43, the the way that traffic needs to turn, because it's 43 onto onto Main Street, if you have the parking on the, what's that going to be, the east side of the road, your turning circle doesn't work. So at that point where you turn, you need to have the lane on that side of the road, otherwise you can't quite make it. If we switch it, and what the preliminary designs did was they switched it from the east side of the road to the west side of the road, and that didn't work, they had to switch it back and then have a transition zone, and then we were losing three to four parking spaces. And you didn't have any parking in front of several businesses because the the lanes were switching from one side of the road to the other. So instead of that, we just said maximize the amount of parking and the the consultant will come through with with lots of different designs and and see what the options are.
Tim, we don't actually own that property. We never bought John Hope's property that we rent.
No, it's mentioned in there.
Oh, it says that it's a rental?
Says leased, yeah.
Oh, says leased, okay, I didn't see that in the, thank you.
That's right, very keen eye. So that is the only pro, so that was another part of the EA, was the EA had the consultant actually looking at a lot more properties than this. There was some other ones that were looking to be purchased and, you know, that type of, that those type of activities, which we felt that the consultant would really be wasting their time upon. This is a current parking lot, which is leased by the township and used as parking, so it makes sense for the consultant to look at this area, give us a recommendation whether it should be, you know, purchased or, you know, fixed up in some way to make sure that you've got that accessible access to Main Street for for people who need reliable access.
Deputy Mayor? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just on on that point of the leased space there, I think it's gravel currently, is it not?
Yeah.
So that's a problem, for sure. So, you know, I can see that that work needs to be done, but I I am concerned about putting taxpayers into dollars into a property we don't own. So that would have to be resolved, right? Reversed, I would think.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
To you, Mr. Mayor, and that's, that's really the only property, we've refined it, so that's really the only property acquisition we'd really look at. Perhaps the consultant would have another idea for another way to meet really what is the parking requirements, but that that property is one that was identified with a previous consultant to to look at more closely. So those are the the three extra project areas. One of the other project areas there is the the park on the other side, so that that area there, we can look at refining to provide, you know, space for, at the moment, it has picnic tables and and is used as a, you know, an area for people to sit. If we wanted to increase parking, one of the ideas was to provide an area for the the vendors to be on that side of street instead of inside the parking lot there. And that way you get a lot more parking, but that needs to be in concert with making sure that we've got accessible crossings. Because if you move it across, if you if your parking's on that side of the road and your vendors are on the other, then you need to be able to get across there, so. So apart from, I think that's the most interesting slides that I have. We can go back into the hydro polls in a bit, I'll just go back to the main project area. So we've got something to to look at. And so the other main things that we have here is the cost. So we're looking at, previously, the the county had also, was essentially taking on most of this, the design work cost. And what that really resulted in is us having less say in what's what's going on. We do have good partners over there and there was very good conversations, but really at the end of the day, it was the county holding the bill for what the consultant was going to do, so the consultant's going to look at them and say, what do you want to do? So this is a, you know, good for us to move forward with an actual cost-sharing agreement. We predict, so considering that we don't have any drawings at the moment, Public Works, this is a little preview of our capital budget that's coming up in the next few weeks, but our strategy that we're moving to is to make sure in an urban cross-section that we're really going through and making sure we're we're doing a year of design and we're making sure we've sorted out the sanitary, the storm, the sewer, the water, and the paving and the sidewalks, all in the same section. So we don't have any situation of, as there has been in the past, of, you know, repaving a road and then needing to do water work on it the next year. We also do our best to coordinate with utilities, but that is a little bit more difficult. So if, in the upcoming budget plan still to be presented to council, I have already before this even, you know, we we had an idea of this timeline, was it was going to be 2026 was a year of planning, and then 2027 was a year of implementation. So the capital budget that I was already planning on presenting had for water and sewer roughly $700,000 to be for sewer and water renewal in 2027, without, we're spending minimum in 2026 just for a design. And then making that mesh with our sidewalk storm reconstruction and asphalt reconstruction in town, which, if you remember looking at the the roads foundation program, we planned to spend about $150,000 on asphalt, $150,000 on, now those sect, this section is a lot larger, we think the construction overall would take at least two years, especially if you're considering County Road 10 and Main Street, Main Street's very complicated. So, pardon me, sorry. So we think it would probably be in the range of, you know, $4 million for North Glengarry's portion for the for the entire project of construction costs. That's, don't hold me to that, as I don't have any construction drawings, but but it's the time to do it when the county's already getting in there because they're they're going to be redoing the road base, they're going to be excavating anyway, so it's it's the time to put put our new infrastructure in. There's obviously some other things taken into account as well, so lots of street furniture, receptacles, those sorts of things. In discussions with Stephanie, we'd figure out what the right committee is and bring those items to that committee to be approved. And it's good if we can get, if we can start moving on those things, then we already have a design which, you know, we can just give to the consultants and the consultants don't spend their time, they can be very expensive, the consultants don't spend their time, you know, coming up with 20 different solutions, we can go through, put it in and say consultant with this in our our Main Street.
So I have several questions.
Yeah.
So, well, first off, just an observation, this is a, this is a once-in-a-lifetime project. I've been here 58 years and Main Street has barely changed since I've been here. A few, did some bump outs at Mill Square earlier on in front of the old police station, you know, we we put in where trees were supposed to be, we did that all on Main Street and found out that they can't grow there. So, you know, we, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to change the the streetscape here and, you know, I still remember they, when all the poles were on Main Street and we actually had parking on the other side of the street and, yeah, so, yeah, so all to say is I'm old. A committee, are we looking at, the previous time, I think we had a committee that was working with the counties. I'd like to see something like that because I just, you know, again, we want to keep our, you know, our finger on it and make sure that we're getting what we want. So is that something that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor? Yeah, actually, I took the words right out of my mouth, so I suggested to, I I wasn't going to talk about it too much here because I had suggested it to to Cameron and he was still figuring out how we were going to do it, but I suggested that we form some kind of committee as a subset of.
Yeah, I think it's really important.
SDG.
You did, okay.
But I I don't know what that would look like yet, because obviously it's a cross.
Well, as long as you have, we have it in our, your head that it's something that we definitely want to see, I mean, I just don't want somebody from the outside telling us what our Main Street's going to look like. The original EA, I'm assuming is completely, is expired?
Because, I believe because we've been, we've still been working on it, we are able to still use that EA.
Still use that, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and do we know what the overall project cost for this and like with the counties, the approximation?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I apologize, I only really caught, estimated the cost for our our portion.
I would imagine there's significantly more, because they mean they have to replace a bridge at Mill Square, I mean, people don't realize that, but that's a bridge there, so. Okay, okay, Deputy Mayor, you had a question?
You mentioned when it comes to the street furniture and lighting fixtures, sending it to a committee. I would recommend the Arts, Culture and Heritage Committee, just because we've, you know, we deal with the heritage aspects of, you know, the Main Street and, you know, incorporating sort of a heritage look would probably be desirable in conjunction with the, you know, the the heritage buildings that are there. So that's just just my thought and what everyone else thinks.
Yeah, go ahead. Brian, you're next. Counselor Kedau?
I did ask her.
You were, yeah, you were.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wondering, Chairman said narrowing the the roadway to discourage trucks, would that come along with trucks being actually banned on Main Street? And and if not, does it put trucks too close to sidewalks and pedestrians?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We would really just defer to the consultant. Whether, so the the trucks are banned through Main Street during the during the middle of summer, that's part of the truck bypass and is a county bylaw. There does need to be exceptions for businesses downtown, so Lanthia Bakery is an obvious exception. I know even the North Glengarry Restaurant uses a tractor-trailer to do their deliveries in Mill Square, so, I mean, anything is.
Yeah, I think the plan was to make it uncomfortable for the, and to slow them down because they 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 roll too fast. And I think that i- in the future, that if we were moving this way, and we should be actually be doing it next summer or when is, we need enforcement. I I I watch transports coming down from down Kenyon Street to the banks and like two to three a day and and trying to make that big curve and they're up on our sidewalks and and then you see them coming straight through town. Now, you do see a bunch out on County Road 45 that are are actually using it, but.
Today, big truck with logs.
Yeah, coming, coming.
Logging truck coming right through downtown. I went like this with the guy and he gave me one of these.
Yeah, so there there needs to be enforcement, I think, and, yeah. Go ahead, subsequent?
Would it be a suggestion at all that on, back to McDonald Street, not McDonald, where the new housing development?
McDonald, uh, McDougal Street?
McDougal, okay, McDougal. To put some sort of ramp off to let, encourage trucks to go that way, you know, roundabout, maybe a huge expense, but even a more developed terms, easy term for trucks. You know, roundabout, maybe a huge expense, but even a more developed terms, easy term for trucks.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's fantastic. The, you know, the way to get the traffic the way that you want is to redesign the road. If you, the, you know, we're talking about, you know, bigger signs and that sort of thing. And the research shows that, you know, putting a lower speed limit sign, putting a, you know, whatever sign it is, generally just doesn't work, because people really follow the design of the road. A, you know, a change like that would be fantastic. I can, I think that the question would become, is how much responsibility does the, you know, does North Glengarry want to take on it? Because these, the route overall is a north, is a SDG route. So it's really up to them, at the end of the day, how they want to route traffic.
The problem is, police won't enforce it, and so they want our bylaw to do it. And so that's, if that's what it takes, and I mean, if there's a revenue stream, then let's, we have Inspector Manley here, will do it for half the price. I mean, he's out there all the time anyways, doing this to everybody, so may as well, we may as well give him a badge. But anyways, that's something for us to discuss in the future, but it definitely, something needs to be done, because, oh, you see some of them going through, and it's crazy. Like, even if they're doing 50 or 50, it's fast for a transport, so, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of points. I'll agree with you on the designing of the street, especially if, give the consultant free rein on moving the parking side to side, that would very much, I'm going to say, deter trucks in the long run. The, just go back to our municipal parking lot and the park across the way. So that, and Mill Square, obviously, we've already got a crosswalk at Mill Square. Are we stipulating a number of crosswalks? Or are we, again, leaving that up to the consultant to bring a recommendation?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, actually, no. So this was one of the things that we found, is it, just to narrow it down, is we're specifying a number of crosswalks. So we're asking for one right between those two, between the parking lot and the area, one at Mill Square. I could check back in the document, but I'm also asking for one further up as well. These were items that were found through the, they were noted in the PIC.
Yep.
I believe it's around Gurnish, it's just near the school.
Yes.
But it was, needed to be a middle block crossing. The other thing that we're asking for is for crossings at each of the, at each of the intersections as well, not across the main road, but between, you know, each minor street to have a crossing across it. And, because at the moment, if you walk them, they are, and we did a walk with the CNI, the Blindness Foundation. And, yeah, it was one of those major issues that was raised. So we want to get those cross-streets to be a really good crossing, where we don't have any issues for people who are, you know, need mobility aids.
Yep, okay. And, small point, but just a consideration as far as streetscape and the furniture, more to the point, the receptacles for recycling and garbage. We already have an issue within the province where they're not going to, well, not the province anymore, but the producers, who are not going to collect from public spaces. So it's just a thought of, if we put these in, people use them, we can't dispose of it. So just, we need to sort of have a thought towards what we can actually do and what we can actually manage, instead of putting something in that's going to be obsolete as soon as it's installed. And that's just, you know, something I was looking at, as I was reading through it.
Do you have a comment?
Yep, through you, Mr. Mayor. So they did come back and say, you know, it, poor, poor Coca-Cola and Costco, they just can't afford to pick up any recycling that's not at your home, I guess. So in one way, that is, it's horrible. In another way, it's actually a little bit freeing, because we've been holding off on doing any receptacles until that decision came through. So along Main Street, we have been coming up with a system, so we found that we can get a dumpster, basically a dumpster for recycling picked up for half the cost of a dumpster for straight waste. So what we're going to try and do is put that facility at the new Public Works Garage, the old rare building, and then we should be able to, you know, that's where we currently take our waste for the Main Street waste. So we can also, if we put recycling receptacles, we can take those and we can put them in at that facility, and then, you know, we will save some money on pickup. So it actually makes it a little bit easier, because we know, you know, when we fill up that dumpster, we call for a pickup, and it's one of those large construction dumpsters. When we need recycling, we call for a pickup, and it's one of those. So it shouldn't be our cost, to be clear, but at least, at least we've got a plan.
Yes, we've got a plan to take care of that. Glad to hear it. Just also, the point, to bring it to committee, and I think it was at 30% stage, would be a very, very good idea, just to make sure we're sort of hitting all the points, and, you know, things may sort of be tweaked at that point. And I'm going to say, depending on how the committee is set up, maybe the rest of council wants to see it, whether we do that in committee or the whole, or we do that offline. I don't know that we necessarily need to bring it to a public meeting, but just make sure everybody's got eyes on it, so that everybody sees and everybody can input if there's something that comes up. Thank you.
Okay, any further questions or comments on this?
Oh, sorry, just one more on timing. So we do have some broken up into stages. At the 30% design submission, we're asking them to, that's when we're asking them for some official meetings, so that would, and some, there's some heritage stuff tied into there, some geotechnical investigations, some additional surveys. And the very last point I just wanted to touch on before we move on is, there was a large part of the EA was the hydropoles. So that was something that was investigated thoroughly, and I don't really want the consultant to have to re-tread that ground, because...
It's very expensive.
It takes a long time to talk to hydro and get all these answers. It's basically this. So those transformers up there, if we were to bring those transformers down, put them on the ground, we need to buy a lot of land, and so that we can have the appropriate setbacks. And on Main Street, we've got a, the primary wires are a main transmission line, so it's very, you know, it's transmitting a lot of power, so we would need very large setbacks. So it really just isn't feasible to be able to, to not have hydropoles on Main Street. They're actually so high on Main Street to get the required clearance above the buildings. One of the things that we were still pushing for, though, was the fiber optic telecommunications bearing. So if you look at that picture there, where it says the fiber optic telecommunications, I don't know, they have much more appealing boxes than that fiber optic pedestal on the bottom right. But I just, before the presentation, I just could not find a picture of one. So that's the old ones that they had in the 90s, I guess. And so those fiber optic cables would be buried, that would visually clear everything up a lot. So that was one of the things I was asking for.
And I will say that, you know, driving, after we had this initial conversation last year, you know, just driving down Main Street, you don't really see those poles. It's all the bell, the, on the right-hand side of the street that you see, that, or it looks terrible. Like, it's, if you buried that, you would, because all the poles are, you know, I think Gary, you were, who was coming through, said, they're almost all new, you know, and so, yeah.
We won't be able to bury them, but maybe we can coordinate with them and get something that's slightly more aesthetically pleasing, that'll be sort of a 100-year life expectancy on it, whether it's the concrete ones, the metal ones. I think they've got some composite ones that, maybe, but maybe that's what we can actually get done, just so that it's...
Just for, yeah, for aesthetic purposes.
Yeah, aesthetically, instead of the wood that are going to have to be done in another 20 or 30 years because of the quality they've gone now.
Okay. Deputy Mayor, you had another question? No?
I do have a few.
Okay, go ahead. Yep.
So some time ago, we did a park plan, remember that? And it was, I think, when Dan was here. And it never actually, kind of, we never did anything with it, but it was focused on Island Park and Mill Square. And with it, the plan kind of got into the idea of connecting Mill Square with Island Park and making that water accessible, where the municipal piece of land is, right behind the Priest Mill. And I saw that in your report that it talks about, you know, consideration for the future. I'm just wondering, since we've got the, you know, design consultants there, and they're going to be looking at Mills, they're going to do the full Mill deal for Mill Square, that looking at that piece of municipal land and finding a way to make it publicly accessible might be desirable now, because if we don't do it now, I can see it being shelved, like, you know, for a long time. So I'm just, I'm just bringing it up so that we don't lose what could be a valuable opportunity to develop that piece.
Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm aware of that parks plan as well, and it's exciting to see that connection made. It was considered, but it may be better to, because the counties won't really have any way to, you know, they don't really have any reason to contribute to that portion, and we can sever it quite nicely, as long as it's taken into account at Mill Square, that traffic will be coming from there. We can sever the project quite nicely, and then have that connection being built on. The only issue, it was definitely considered, and I agree, that would have, you know, ideally, it would be great to have it in here, but if it is in here, then we're going to have cost-sharing issues with SDG. Each of these project areas, even the ones that are really municipal, so the municipal parking lots and those sorts of things, because they have so much frontage onto Main Street, they make a lot of sense to go into here. Because if you're redesigning the Main Street municipal parking lot, you want to redesign the entrances so it works with your new bumpouts, with your new every portion.
Yeah, I just think to her point is, now that we know that that connection is going to be included, then, you're right, then we could at least move forward in the future. But as long as that connection is there for us to attach to. And one of the other issues was some landowners didn't want them putting a boardwalk across their property. The landowner that was specifically, as Long Gong, she sold the property, so, and the new landowners were interested in it at the time, so, to talk about. But like I said, I think just if we're ready for it, at least, you know, because maybe, I'd say, if we're putting out $4 million, I don't know that we can afford to be doing that, that's for sure.
Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I just, I'm, I just don't know if there might be an opportunity there. I think, you know, if we said to the counties, look, you know, let's talk to the consultants about, you know, adding an extra, you know, few thousand dollars onto this, that North Glengarry would pay in order to have it looked at. It just seems to me, because, I don't know, we don't want to be developing infrastructure there, because I know there's going to be changes in the pavement and parking and all of that. You know, and it's all going to cost money. And then if we were then, you know, a few years down the road, then to kind of relook at that and then have to undo, you know, newly done work, it wouldn't make sense. So, I don't know, it's just worth consideration. Maybe it's not practical, but it came to mind. I just... The, with regards to, oh, a communication plan. Always a communication plan. I didn't see in there, I saw that there was a public meeting that was listed, and, you know, there's going to be, there was talk, but I think we need a solid communication plan with this plan.
Yeah, because we need to engage our business owners through this.
Yeah, it's going to be very, like, one of the most important aspects of this. So I think it's going to need its own communication plan. Have you, have you talked about that with the counties yet?
Through Mr. Mayor. So, yes, we talked about having it integrated with the consultant, and we thought that we would limit it, again, because the consultant, we want to kind of define their scope of work, we would limit them to making sure they're doing the PICs and having official meetings with several committees. We do have them having regular coordination with the staff side every two weeks. And the thought was that, and I haven't built this out, because Cameron and I still need to talk more about it, but the thought was that we would come up with that with the committee, so the, some sort of SDG/North Glengarry Subcommittee, and figure out what our communication plan would be from there. The other thought is that until we have a, at least a 30% design submission, which we wouldn't have until February next year, February, March, we wouldn't have a lot to be able to communicate to those various stakeholders. Once we're at the 30%, design, we're actually able, and that's why we want that 30% in February, because that means that we can do the 70% design submission with the steering committee, we can start really taking in those comments after we reach that 30%. Really, the 30% is kind of taking all of the information that we have now, collating it together, so that all the consultants know what they're talking about and putting it down on a piece of paper. So we've got something that we can redline, right? We can start writing on it and say, we want to have this, we want to change this here, and that sort of thing. So that's why we don't have a communications plan in there. But we would proba, that would be staff-led, probably with Todd and, Todd from the counties, and Misha here to really come up with how we're going to talk to business owners and...
Okay. You're good? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tim, just so, we have it out there, and it referenced county's infrastructure, and it referenced our infrastructure as water and sewer. Is Storm County's or is Stormos?
Stormos County's.
Okay, so that is their infrastructure, so that's good. Okay, and that was it, I think I just, I wanted to clarify that. That was one of the notes I made when I was going over it. Thank you.
Do you have anything else, Tim?
That, thank you.
Okay, no further questions or comments? Okay, actually, I think, it's been so long, could you read that motion again? Yeah, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried and unopposed. Items under the consent agenda, Councilor Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Williams. At the Council of Township of North Glengarry, we see the items from the consent agenda for information purposes only.
Okay, thank you. I just, I have a couple of things. First off, just, I want to thank the Ministry of the Environment, Conservation, and Parks for downloading some more items to us without consideration. I mean, some of them we're already doing, but, yeah, it's great that we're getting that. My secondary questions are in regards to the photos that are on there from the Raisin Region Conservation Authority. Are we, there's blockages, is that being taken care of, or...
Yes, I believe, I met with Allison last, Allison McDonald from the IRCA, and that was included in your package. They, my understanding is they've cleared all those blockages.
They have, okay.
Yeah, they had to send a, it's rarely inaccessible, so they had to have canoes and one-person kayaks and whatnot to locate them, and then they were able to open it up, and the flow now is going through. So I asked her, as well, is that something that's done regularly, the monitoring? And, no, not really, but they have such, they're able to monitor the water such, at such a level that if it drops or increases a red flag... at such a level that if it drops or increases, a red flag goes up and then they send something out, so, yeah.
Go ahead.
Maybe just to the point that if there was four of them, the red flags didn't work. So, and. The other trick is, I mean, anybody who's dealt with them is, they need to monitor this at least monthly for the next six months to make sure they don't come back. And unless they've been trapped, they're coming back.
Yeah.
So as long as that is maintained, at least until the winter. And I mean, winter might allow a little more access to get in and do some more clearing, but yes, we do thank them for getting that done.
Allison, his little chuckle at the end was not towards you, it was just, uh, the way Mike does his presentations, okay? Mike. Anything else on, uh, and, and, Jen, I do want to say thank you for putting all these in. Uh, i- it's good, uh, just for us to see everything that comes in, so, uh. Okay, no other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried and unopposed. Uh, so, uh, no new business, notice of motion. Next regular meeting of council is Monday, October 27th, 2025, at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. Uh, question period. Hines, anything? Nothing tonight? Okay, you had one follow-up question, go ahead.
Yeah, if, if, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for me. Um, Tim, just a question about the Maxville Lagoon report. What is the, the, the status of that? I think it's been some time since we've heard anything.
Through Mr. Mayor. Uh, unfortunately, they did not accept our proposal to, uh, go to a, a multi, you know, a multi-discharges per year. To do multiple discharges per year, thank you. Um, so, uh, unfortunately, it means that there'll have to be some sort of infrastructure built to reduce, uh, I believe it's the ammonia levels, uh, to be able to.
Thought it was the phosphate levels.
You may be right. But the bottom line being.
I think what's happening is we're currently in the EA process. So now that that's been taken off the table, they're going to come to us with, uh, some options on what's the best option for us to, to, to do that. Because we can take away the phosphate levels, we can probably get a second discharge, so.
Oh, I see.
So it, it's going to take an installation of some kind, so, uh, probably a very miniature version of the Sega system that we're putting in at the Alexandria. That's really the most successful type of technology there. Uh, there's some other places around that with boxes of placed inside lagoons. I don't want to use those, there's some lawsuits going on about them at the moment, so we should probably stick to Sega systems. But everyone's really struggling with these, uh, the, with the new limits. Uh, the new limits actually came in before, you know, a, a fair while ago now, but they started to be enforced just after the Maxville Lagoon EA was renewed. So it means that our, um, you know, our, technically, the way that our, our lagoon operates currently, uh, doesn't meet the new regulations, because it was built under the old ones. So at the moment, we grandfathered in, so hence why our new, um, you know, if we were to, if we make changes, we need to make sure that we're meeting those affluent limits.
Yep.
Um, yeah, so, because I know we were hopeful that, uh, you know, a secondary discharge would take care of things and, and that would be the end of that. So, um, obviously, not being able to do that is the, the installation that you're referring to, is this a million-dollar thing, or is it a $10 million thing? And I'm just concerned about timelines. Like, we've installed here on this, like, for a long, long time. And, and we're, we're, we're preventing development from happening, so we need to, we need to keep it going.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, the scale is millions, not tens of millions, like the Alexandria Lune, Lagoon, just because of its scale. It's, uh, Alexandria Lagoon is, I think, six time, like, as it is, as it stands now, not with the expanded capacity, is six times as large as, uh, as Maxville. So, uh, it's not as expensive, but it's still very expensive. So it's, you know, it's going to take some major capital planning.
Process, which is what we're doing.
Yeah.
So that things, they start at the EA process regardless of knowing what, if we could do that discharge or not. Uh, so the EA process is, is, is going.
That takes a couple of years?
Uh, it takes one year.
One year, and we've already started it, so we're probably.
Yeah, we're in the 75% range. We're just going to get the recommendations back, that, that EA will come back with recommendations, that these are your best technologies to do, this is your rough cost to do it. But, uh, yeah, it's disappointing.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay, um, so, yeah, we are going in closed session, so I'll ask, uh, Councilor Manley to read us in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Caddell. Proceed in closed session as this matter deals with personal matters of an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, that may be discussed in closed session under Sections 239 to B of the Ontario Municipal Act.
All those in favor? Motion is carried, and we will take a two-minute break.